Welcome to the conference.
Have you seen mail yet?
Oh, is that true? I told my son that.
No, I didn't put one in, I just did it for routine, sorry. I put all the places, it was kind of... Are you really happy yet?
Oh, not better. My son is just like a June bomb. Turned out he has a chest infection. He used to be on that, so I can't open him up. Why am I missing a turn?
When I remember Paul literally all that week, he's still not coming up. I don't want him to know very late. I'm here, I'm here. This horrible place, the rash, I would imagine.
What?
Oh, bless you. The thing, wasn't it? Okay. Shut the video out.
How was your week, please?
Very nice. Very nice. You don't really like that. Stop. Shall we have a... Just stop.
Good. Your hair looks nice.
Thank you. It just, I got some new, um, praying for it. Um, right. What, like anything, this is what I'm saying, early henry, I've started doing some, named the children. Because mine, Erin, doesn't do the job as young as the kids, because she hasn't been in it.
Well, it's working well.
It's like you're just like, mate.
Yeah, it's all good.
Yeah, I'm a crazy witcher.
Yeah, it's, uh, a crazy romance, but good. Um, but yeah, we caught up, just because we're in this kind of, well, in-between stage with the strategy again now, what we've put forward meeting this week. Um, the only thing that has changed is that, um, after the trustees meeting, they have decided to put in that sixth goal around international.
I like my...
Agree with you.
Remember that by then.
Yeah. Yeah, but, so it is going to trustees this week. Um, the, it's been very, very clear that wording will be determined by the brand, but actually it's a concept behind each one now. Um, so just wanted to share with you the whole thing, actually. Like email it, it'll be easier. Um, so you see that, but it is, it's amazing, it's the whole brand has gone back in, but everything else is as is. It's just that the wording has changed slightly, uh, from what it meant. I got a shock in my throat, so I'm sorry for myself. Yeah, you know when you just like, you wake up and it's like, oh, oh, it can't be old.
Mr. Norwood, um, do we know who is listening in on the, on the video?
Well, we know who's listening in to the council. There are Tuesday, perhaps, and the council's Welsh language, which, and... Um, I'm...
What about that?
I think I'll leave that to Mr. Williams. It is my present, yes, from my listeners, I think there are three of them, we understand that there is one written in. It's entirely sure who it is. It's lies, it's in evidence, on behalf of my contact, she has a blunder, goose met. Would they mind me saying, if you're hurt, do you want to... My girl, I also want to make sure, I want to make sure my grand on that. Hey, now, Mr. Williams, can you start your position? Thank you, my lord. The structure of my submissions is going to fall into the argument page 281 or bunker. So I will be addressing you first on section 50 of the 2030 Act. There are provisions that section 50, subsection two, is exhausted, not to use, and covers six forms only, and nothing more. So that's grounds one of two. And then are grounds three to four, concerning the court's approach to the allegation that reached paragraph 59 of the code. And there are submission files, orders, disinterrogations, the code by applying the proposal, which is, isn't related to the points, isn't it? Um, to the extent that it is found against other... That is finding against the allegation as it's possible to show that, that, and finally, the factual provision, the council adopt it, count that the effects reorganising primary attention, secondary attention, is wrong. So that's the orders I'll be dealing with in theory. And can I start, I turn to this application section of this year, the Act? Um, and perhaps the logical basis to begin, just to set out the council's position on the interpretation of binding law legislation such as this. It's common ground between the parties that the English, Welsh, the legislation having status provided for in section 156, the Government of Wales Act 2006. It also appears to be on the ground that if there is some assertion, material difference between the two texts. In principle, the text in both of these, in a rule manner, in accordance with usual statutory instruction, without giving primis to either. So, my lords, my ladies, I will be addressing the English text. But something I should say should be taken detract from the council acceptance that both texts have equal status. And the reason why my submission, the Welsh text, will be brief, is not matter of primis, it is simply because, the reason why you explain it, you course, we say, that all the same interpretative points applied to the English text, also by the Welsh, need to similar out to the same old statute, which I've submitted at. And we say, the basis of whether an English or a Welsh is the same. And that task is to ascertain the meaning of that language against the relevant act and point. And in both of these, the colour, content, statutory words, that derive from their context, in the wider sense, though including not only other parts of the same statute, but also any other material shared by statutory purpose. And that content is exactly, regards both the English and the Welsh. And finally, if the word is in the three Welsh English texts, and my position is appreciated, the list is fine. The council would respectfully adopt the approach suggested in the law commission, but tab 25 is... Is that the one appended to the Welsh... Um, it is, um, well, yes, you've got a better, having said that, to the form of it, of course, I think that Welsh, Welshminister's submission is, um, is the consultation. Uh, the, what you've got is tab 25, authority, is the final...
I listen to everyone, test version, please.
Um, and the relevant fitting, we're looking at, going from, yes, that's the full of it. It's, it's actually a test version. This is the version that we put in the column, yes. And, um, the paragraphs that are taking the court, paragraphs 12.39 as well, we can investigate the interpretation of binding law legislation, where this is the language text, their differences. And, and we say, in accordance with what the law commission here suggests, that the appropriate was worth, as I can see, would be to revolve it by reference to purpose or object of interpretation. And more generally, we all say, that the possible inconsistency between two language versions, equal status, tends to infer the importance of a permissive contextual feature of statutory interpretation by legal legislation, was originally different, which by definition, could not be capable of resolving any apparent contradiction here to by the use of different, distinct form of expression. So that's the council's position on, um, the general framework of the position. And, um, my lords, my ladies, I'll now turn to the relevant pre-negotiated fact, fact of the life, in the context of both sections of 50. And there, we just, I think all, that's the question, you start with the words, one word, two. And then you say that the words are ambiguous, yeah? I say that the words, you do, are natural, absolutely, and that this will become a question. So my wife, um, pick up, that, that is a context, the starting point is tab 10, which is in October 2017, white paper, preceding the Act. And the relevant bits there, regarding each ten, section three, small organisation. We're in, we're now in chapter. The word's running, tab 11, is it? It is. How long I didn't make a new one? Um, page 10 sets out the current, which means page 10, is page 10 of that. How many pages have they been changing this month? Yes, then over to page 10, why are we checking? And, um, the explanation of those three paragraphs is in the vast majority of decisions should be made in the local, rather by the instance, the default to them. And then at page 14, this section sets out what is being reserved, turns post 16 education. And that's the 16th, page 40. That's the, we intend Welsh ministers to turn all proposals concerning the reason of six forms or the addition of, including the motion of six forms, both schools. And we say, it's striking, what the text does not, it does not, if Welsh ministers will determine proposals concerning removal of the addition of six forms, including the closure of any... And we say, not only would one expect in the white paper to say that, that very wide application was what it meant, but also the open. That would have meant the vast majority of school organisation proposals were not, that they would count against the general... And it is identified as below. Come back to us, of course. And the explanation given below, with the reservation of ours in this regard, is the Welsh ministers' executive responsibility for the action for post 16 education provisions in places, exploit their direct responsibility for funding post 16 vision. Just, judgment, no, just the explanation just below is part of the end. And, just for your information, the way that this works is that the Learning and Skills Act 2002 makes this a provision for education in ways down to that part, Welsh ministers fund six forms directly, either by making grants, authorities to use specifically six forms, or by providing money to post 16 providers. Whereas funding of schools, which is mainly provided to local authorities who largely under-identified local governments and to locals, or... So funding both cases comes from the Welsh government, but six things, funding specific facilities that the Welsh government can't provide. The first, schools will age largely generally. So in practical terms, if you've got a school which has below 100, will it have two streams of funding, partly to be funded by the Roman support grant, and partly by direct grant? And I think that's right, because if I may come, come back to you, because if it's then closed, for the school that's got below 100, and if the local authority doesn't open, I think the quality is relatively large. A, where's the money gone? And B, how do you fund extra places for, for quality 1000? And the answer, my lord, I think, that you fund it by section 31 of the, of course, the Act. But, my lord, if I can just deal with that, I'll come back to it, just, well, you could say, it's a place where I'm being forced to touch it, because if they're going to keep the money, and the Welsh government then left it, I'm going to pay extra money on top. You can see they, yeah, you see, they're huffing, they don't like that. Yeah, I appreciate the point, my lord, I'll come back to you. Um, then page 17, is poor outcomes to the antisemitism. And, um, the outcomes are, we expect these proposals given, which result in a greater, like, decisions. Now, um, I should say just to complete, that there's no material difference between the text of the English Welsh and Welsh version. The next bit is the explicatory brand, which is at tab 12, English text. And the date on the front at is, which is, is tab 12. So, um, you can't give me, I suppose, the, the front page here, 221. My lord, if it, I think, the G has the page on, so each time I refer, I'll make sure I do the page on.
Well, we need to do it, we're already in the document, we're getting to a new document, but we can get that.
Beginning, yes. The, the date on the front is a, 2012, when the bill was introduced as the Welsh assembly. In fact, the memorandum is published in a slightly different form, two volumes, one with the bill, one in November 2012, after consideration of the bill and committee, which is slightly confused. Though the date here is a, this is the November version, we thought it would provide the data of the issue of the earlier issue. But there are no material differences between the two. And also, really important, please, are no relevant amendments to the provisions of the bill, so obviously from reorganisation of the bill, that you have, so nothing, nothing relevant. And, so this is our, so the...
And the small...
No, so one, when they change, it'll go on, which, you, you can't, um, I, I don't, I need, this is, this is fun, this... And the school organisation section, got at page 16. It's a regulation, it's quite long, it is. Um, and starts by setting up the current position. And 3.49 says there are a number of negative causes arising. 3.50, it means too many are determined by the Welsh ministers, this matters 17 here, this. And it is considered the decision should be in a vast majority. And as far as that is, we made at the local... 3.56 says, um, the proposals in the bill will ensure that the vast majority... And then 3.57, the second critical point. Instead of a situation where all, which is objection, going to the Welsh ministers, only those proposals which receive an objection from a local authority, or in the case of the Welsh authority, the relevant, which is not here, or which are connected only with the rule of application of six forms provision, the lighting of Welsh, acting responsibilities in relation to post 16 education, vision of funding, will be referred to the Welsh ministers.
If any of the parties have found the general purposes of policy and identify costs, second, sets the sentence to the question.
Then three point five nine and three point six one emphasize the purpose behind the change. There we go, again. Three point five nine, three point five nine, three point six one. They are just, they are, three point six one risk to continue, which the Welsh, by the high proportion. The Welsh Government statistics, yeah. Judge say about each page. Um, as far as, um, this paragraph, the explanatory brand, my lord. I find that, I think about three point seven.
Yes, yes. Our position is that the judge overrules words.
He meant, but he doesn't express the use of that word. Maybe he just prefers, well, okay. It's not a simple paragraph, six year. Then it takes off. Again. The first part of that sentence is saying which makes sixth form vision. Yes, we say, well, it's not just which it does. That is just the word saying. You say that as that said. Second sentence. Yes.
Not special for you, but I've been trying to look at the Welsh version along the initial, at thirteen. This page twenty thirteen is really not the one Mr Williams put there, meaning he qualifies, uh, and probably add a couple of proposals for sixth form. So Mr Williams will note that back to that, my lord. Sorry. Um. My lord, you have this one. Um, anyway, I'm going back to that, to that, as I just showed, which must be six one. And, um, it, it was also relevant to look at the regulatory impact, which got section seven. That's got this, uh, twenty two. And, um, the school mission fits that bottom paragraph, uh, twenty eight. Two six one. So the, this is the. So the impact of this rest, courage, respect, that, 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 and the disempowerment by Welsh expertise in classes, which is local. Then you've got, um, option five of seven, five, it's on page forty eight, which is reform of post. What I mentioned happens. And there again, what the regulation, the path, this option, that. Post. Post. Right. Or where. Now, the Welsh ministers continue to determine where these are so, uh, the issue. And then at second point, the second. Um, you have a rather precise definition of what, um, the Welsh ministers expect the effect of, uh, reform to be of the post identified by the Welsh ministers over the last five years, and is anticipated as only around six percent. Face, rest, force. That, yes. Um, and again, my lord, for justice, who it's, I understand those discussions, those relevant to these bits, Welsh negotiations. Certainly, because I just looked at, we didn't point it out, I guess, to you, so we, so we. And, um, finally, we have the extract of the Welsh Senate page one to be mentioned of with the. I'll, I'll take you to, but, um, I should just say at the outset, the condition is, it doesn't allow any, it doesn't necessarily permit or condition.
Well, Peppernart is going into the case of effects of the different policy. The Senate is a statutory body with its own rules, and the ministers' minutes are published on the website, unlike what has cost me. Celebrated. So I don't think we should speak Peppernart as being the last word. May well, possibly it is, that we have to start afresh and decide what the Welsh government, the Welsh ministers' government and the Senate, uh, intend. But I do have to be careful about assuming what happens in the question of today.
Indeed, my lord, I, I mean, my own research has not turned out the case to address the viability of Peppernart in the Senate. My lord, retaliate the work, I, I know.
So if it's living it up and now you've got rights in a respect of the constitutional settlement, I think, and starts questioning things, oh, we don't have a good advice, right? I'm not saying it's different, I'm just saying it wasn't big in the sense that the part goes on and then it's different. You must have it early.
Yeah, indeed, my lord, and actually of the reason particularly mentioned, Peppernart in this connection, perhaps. The reason is the effect analogous to, by Scottish law, which is case of Gowan brands. That is, or even the Canadian, um, they've got a bit of that. Well, what I'm saying is your submission is not. And your submission is Peppernart, does not, be, be actual. Your reading. Right. What is your submission of whether Peppernart. Um, bearing in mind. My lords, um, I think that the answer is, um, that I, I can address you on this without any reference. Because I consider that what you said in the Welsh Senate here is already ambiguous, doesn't. Well, that's, that's our, our expectation says. So, um, that's your submission as to the, what is the debate itself. But we do need to understand this, and we should be looking at that. Because I think Mr Williams would be saying that we should. Now, if you say we shouldn't, and as a matter of law, we shouldn't, if you have that submission, then enough. If, if you accept that they should, say it's ambiguous, then that's. Yeah, so I need to know your precisely how to position it, because if it's relevant, you can't take it out, you take it to us, then you say you have your judgments. My lord, I say you should. That is, that is my submission.
We should not.
Of course, not to be looking at. Second. Right, so why not? Because legislation is not ambiguous, it is not obscure, it doesn't need to be. And anything that could be applied are not. And I pray that. On second, it's, 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 it's. If you're wrong, that's, you're wrong. That's the difference. And I, I would like to have precisely the reasons why you say it was not the debates in the Senate as a matter of law, and, um, whether you say precisely whether parties of the Wales, whether the station for the Senate or not, and if so, why? I mean, I'm sorry to.
It, 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 it's too much, right? Can I, um, we, 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 can I come back a little, as I said, this one, and we don't have a department, I think, do need. Makes.
To return.
We, we have that problem, but we don't. And we, we want to, we want to make exceptions to you. Now, can I?
Just a bit of a short, it's only relevant to our own, to the case, because everyone, needs to apply. But it's been all that. Bear in mind that the way we live is a way of different. I, we haven't got such a, this could stand out here, but very often in Welsh, you'd have a general section one, which would tell you what the per. And then the rest of the sections are read against that, and I just don't notice section one here. And it may well be that a minister has seen about, uh, a purpose section being the Senate is, would have a very different flavour from an English minister signing up and saying something in common. So it might be useful just to double check section one, and just think about the fact that legislation is done differently here, it isn't a mini version.
My lords, Mr Lewis, you have it actually got. It's, it's early on, and the planetary state is in practice.
Um, my lord, they, Ben is, you should, why just take you to the fix this, the debate?
They, so we're looking at debate now.
We're looking.
Saying, well, I say, I just need to make. Said to me, you'll tell us, actually, it does not take you any further, I think.
Right, and where is it?
So in the supplemental bundle, page one.
And if you want to start it, you should go straight into something that's only relevant, say, objective these provisions. Sorry, and then, and then.
I don't, I'm trying to find.
Now. She wants to be mentioned by the authorities.
My lord, that, page fifteen.
Yeah.
Well, you're onto the word screen, I think. Um, my lord, I think what you may have is the provisions of appeal. Oh, yeah, I think it's. The second, and then all the other ones. Drive on the authorities, or whatever. And, right, so, again, then when it comes to, this, or electronic.
My lord, we'll send an electronic version to you, perhaps I'll come, come back.
Well, no, no, actually, I'll, I'll, I'll follow. Page, which page is it?
So, I'm at page one, very possible, page. Uh, this is the minister. And, and my learning friend, the paragraph starting, what's for our organisation, I'm delighted she shares my view, there's another page. And. Well, what I don't understand, you've just dropped us into something, you don't have the beginning, I don't know if this is what the minister said when the bill was introduced, I don't know whether it's a question and answer session, because what you say in answer to a question is very different from what you say when you make a statement about what you're going to do. A question in court argument is very different to a statement in a judgment, and this is dropping a paragraph out of context is deeply unhelpful and not reasonable. But Doug just told me what this is all about. Well.
My lord, take on board, um, my lord's position on that, which I will understand, maybe actually, given this, this is not my material, I'm not blind.
Definitely, it's something you might want to know.
Exactly, yeah.
Well, I don't actually know who's speaking here. I'm guessing it's the minister.
He's incredibly, I don't know, and parts of the law, some of the age, and so, we are absolutely, so, context, we would state. So, my lord, this, absolutely, I don't have the, oh, which means that, so, can we make sure, Mr. Williams, if you come, I will, surely will, that we have a more complete motion.
My lord, um, that's what I wanted to show you, um, context, my understanding of the provision act itself, which you have in the provision act, at, um, tab four, you know, this are. And another, I'm sorry, that I'm constraining the legislation, and I'd like to see the whole act, and it's, it's a really other, same point. There may be parts in this definition which inform what it is that at the beginning, if, maybe, appreciate it, but, um, but.
So, so again, have we been.
I will make sure. Then, if, um. Part three, um, starts with section thirty-eight, school organisation, and, uh, so it's any, not, not any, it, it, it's a school organisation. What was the rest of the text about? Well, it's about, it's about variety. Such as, including, um, all sorts of different subjects to do with school organisation. Um, section thirty-eight sets out the requirement for a statutory code for school organisation, and makes distinction, like, now, um, those, the relevant ground, we find, of the distinction between requirements and guidance, which is subsection three. And then subsection four, must have, must have regard, anyone, gone, there is a distinction, must have permission, requirement, and to have the last application. Um, then, section forty, sets out the requirements for the discontinuance of any establishment or institution, discontinuance of any contained school, any regulated institution, to be made in a court, part three. Section forty-one provides the authority of any post established, makes new schools. Section forty-two, one, the local authority of any post regulated institution, the community school. Section forty-three, applies discontinuance, discontinuance.
We can see it, the.
Um, then section forty-eight concerns the consultation and publication, because also section forty-eight, one, proposed must publish, made up of this, have, in, with code, subsection two, before publishing, proposed, and subtle. And subsection five, must publish a report.
So, I'm just trying to understand, um, the code, which has mandatory and, uh, wise or good provisions, is the sort of fundamental way in which you go about using the provisions?
It provides the framework for the local.
Yes, that's who they ask.
Tells you what you're supposed to do, again, about it, to, to, publish, how to actually do it. So, and then we see, um, court vision, the court, which, and say, who is, who is doing the, the, and then we see the publication, consultation, again, that is true. Yeah. Um, my lord, then section forty-nine is the right to eject, um, forty-nine, one, eject, and, um, the need to publish, what is known as ejection, or what is section forty-nine, three, in other words, response, ejection, which. And, um, one then consults the critical section, section fifty, not approved by Welsh ministers. Section fifty, subsection one, proposed, published under section forty-eight, require approval under this section, A, proposed effect on formal education, okay? And then, it's subsection two, indication of whether, the information, A, is a established discontinuance of providing provisions which will be moved into the court. It will be, make a regulated iteration effect, which would be the condition of the issue, it was, of, of, in this, deep. Um, it's worthwhile, I think, keeping a finger in section fifty, and just turning up, um, the relevance of regulated iteration, which is in schedule two. Lord, that's the, the, the. In paragraph six, schedule two, and what is the only, um, the only intention of relevance? And paragraph six, of paragraph one, is the addition of the fourth, which doesn't have it. And paragraph six, two, is the removal of school, which does. And which is going to continue in existence, giving implications against, there's got to be, school is there, you're adding or you're taking, that's school again. So that's section fifty. Then, um, then, we, we'll comment on, on, take, fifty, is that it, is about six-four education. It did, my lord, that is my overall, I'm just looking at it without considering the detail of words. Proposals require approval if they affect six-four, or if it is other than the relevant thing, so that's a bit different. And then it tells you what proposals affecting six-four education are. Then it says, if they require approval, you've got to send the documents to the Welsh ministers, and so, pound scale, that's made for proposals. And then it gives the options to the Welsh ministers, in section five, and timing, what means, nothing else, is relevant until ten, which tells you what relevant they're going to be. And are there equivalent, separate provisions about approval in relation to other types? Well, the way it works, that other type is made by the local authority, that the local authority takes a decision on under section fifty-three, that completely showing. Um, section, yes, so section fifty-one is about approval by a local authority, proposals for A, C, and B. Section fifty-two, would be a methodical or a, after, yes, it's a religious, I wish to be, I would, yes, that fifty-one is, is, other, it's, it's all, it's, um, couldn't necessarily have been, because it could be, it could be an independent device, I. What, yeah. Kind of, but it's those kind of things. Um, section fifty-two is about something related, so, um, if you've got proposal A, that requires a thing on section fifty, then you've got related B, those that are being determined, so, that is, that if these are not, is not be treated as related proposals in a chat, that that is, is very different, in, section fifty-two. Um, and then section fifty-three is about the determination, and where they don't. Is, of section one, where any proposal, which lies in section forty-eight, not, which lies in one, those, those should be, and, and, for time, which to do that, you've got to, 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 Welsh ministers, and, well, thank you, I'll just, I'll, that is the issue. My lord, I do think that I need to take you to section fifty-four, five, this, um, and. I'm just briefly, with chapter three, which starts at section fifty-seven, and I think all I need to say about that is that sections fifty-seven to seventy, chapters, uh, three, chapter four as well, they deal in broad terms, the proposal is triggered by a direction made by the Welsh ministers, so, where you've got excessive, sufficient provision, uh, they're not here, um, I do need to take you to section seventy-one, which concerns Welsh ministers, the vast structure of six-four education. Section seventy-one. Says by, one, A, the Welshman's can make proposal after this section, or, A, established by the authority of one, the community or the special schools, the life, second free education, teaching requirements of six forms, and their other second free education, so that's the new dictionary. B, an alteration described in paragraph six of schedule two, so that's adding, taking away a sixth form from a school that is in place before, or is afterwards, and C, is a discontinuance, again, of a sixth form. So the effect of section seventy-one, read with schedule two, paragraph six, is that the Welshman's that can make proposals can involve either adding, taking away six forms, or shutting away the sixth form school, in other words, sixth form school. If, if my, if, and, that is a question, I will, I will come back to. Um, the use of section one B, but they had the sixth form, they closed, um, Wantbury High School, they opened a new one which is three to sixteen, but the Welsh ministers nonetheless, in section one one B, say, right, you're going to have a sixth form, this part of Wantbury Park, or whole form. Well, it, it, in principle, it means that they could make a proposal of that kind, but you need to, um, it's from the local authority, and, um, in circumstances where the local authority had decided that what should happen was three to sixteen, that or, a school for, a down to eighteen, um, no doubt that local authority would have something to say about it. But if ultimately, what, uh, I, I probably wanted was to have a sixth form to Wantbury Park, one way in which you could do that is to go to the Welsh ministers and say, you exercise your powers in section one D, and you put your power back, quantity like that could happen, so, um, legally it could happen. Um. So, I now come to the first round, which concerns the judge's finding in paragraph seventy-seven, judgment, section fifty, subsection two, doesn't specify the overuse in which proposal protects the education possession, section one. We say that finding must be drawn, that wasn't argued before, it was. Can you give any, um, the edges of this intervention? There's a bit of a bolt. Um, first of all. It would make no sense, the section fifty, subsection two, to be non-extractive, because it would make the subsection redundant. The subsection would be automatically unnecessary, but potentially misneed, if it were not a force definition, but rather, this, that, it's on. No, maybe, um, using an end, it's been, is it, saying, yeah, okay. But, that's my solution, it's a matter of natural statutory language, you have an exclusive definition, judging recently, and seventy-seven. Well, it's, it's, of the fact that the word own is not used, so, the subsection would play the role of, of education, own. And, and we might all be, at fault, that, drastic, but it also, that, it also just makes no sense. Um, but I mean.
I suggest, as good a one, give it.
There is no citation or authority. This, this, this matter just did not arise at all. Very, very. Um, but one can see, this must be exhausted, and lots of close, which one looks, and fight for things that are comprehensible, section, section four. But, it introduces, sure, clarifies in the natural meaning, to explain where its limits, all potential, multiple, and actual, though it deals with things that are horrific, or indeed beyond. And the matter addressed in subsection two, and all matters that come into it, all matters which is finding your, it's, that's a very core. Um, so, when the judge, the whole subsection would be unnecessarily. And conversely, the subsection doesn't miss anything, which could be said to be unclear, where some sort of explanation might be helpful, so one's supposed to move subsection two, non-extractive, I might say, well, it would be helpful to know whether any option particular, not, need to be effective for education, or whether, if, 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 that's, that's, that's the sort of thing, where, joined, the subsection doesn't deal with anything, that's, also, so, we, one, touches, and, that, that, the, the second, is that it would make no sense, the section, the subsection two, to be exclusive, rather, also, in light of the doubt, part three, that, the overarching work, this, is to make sure that you refer to, and reading subsection two, the exclusive, should have precisely the opposite effect, because it would require, if you propose to work out, to establish, whether it is not proposed for education for the first, of section one, without any useful guide for doing, and to refer the proposal to Welsh ministers, in the case of any doubt. of section one, without any useful guide for doing, and to refer the proposal to Welsh ministers, in the case of any doubt. Exactly. Um, I mean, obviously, use, this is not the way legislation is drafted, and, and we get the help from the Welsh version. Um, my lord, these are the Welsh versions, took all the sense of both the fashion, the sense of the English version, they all seem to be fine. And we note too, that section fifty subsection one, is the same formulation, subsection two, it says, proposals published on section forty-eight, requiring approval under this section, if, doesn't say only. If section fifty subsection one, it's totally, that's meant to be in force, which the sort of proposal. And they turn exactly opposite, we go, not saying either of those things. So, my lord, I don't think I need to say that about round one, that is, Mr. Williams, that doesn't support. Uh, yes, my lord, Mr. Williams, there, there was nothing wrong with the judge's, I, I say this is a binary matter. I see, I see. Um, so, my lord, can I now come to round two? And say, of the word, um, subsection two, and our thought, we, we say. The word only, subsection two, A, must be intended to be, that the subsection applies where a school provides sixth form education, and nothing else. And the first emphasis on this, that is the natural, important sentence, because otherwise the word only would be redundant. If one asks, why the word only at all, the answer has to be, because it is intended to mimic the function of schools by sixth form education alone. And there will be no point in using it, if it simply refers to a form of school education, such as sixth forms and not children, other energies, which is not by, um, part of education, because in that case, it would be, that be, and, any consequence at all. Education, line, is by definition, not which, which, that's how the drivel works. There is the word only, intended to refer to a specific type of education suitable to justice, it would be both wrong and confusing. And there is a strong presumption, statutory education, it's the law. Provided, relevant, section, venue, no evidence, turning up, ten forty-four, twenty-one, two, seven, thousand twenty-three. But the interpretation favored by, favored by the High Court, wrongs the word only with any significance. The exact same amount would be reached in any other. Um, Britain, it often came across, the university, which said it provided forces to call only, I'm, I'm graduate. It wouldn't say, university must be talking about some special degree, I'm, I'm graduate, so they provide, this, this, then, it's a university which just educates undergraduate classes. Um, I know, in terms of, education forces would be, created, the, the, the occasion of which the Welsh ministers have to devote, and then, given, those who make things in form of education, by, through, any establishment, discontinuance, and any school including. I mean, I don't know what this is about, I suppose, all through school, or, not really read, so it's basically seconded. But it would be the largest proportion of secondes, it, it would, a lot of eleven to eighteen, which would have been a lot of purpose to the end. Um, now, we actually have, we don't, the Welsh government, others do not hear, I mean, you, you, I'm not, enough majority of them, could have one second and half, you wouldn't have, or, or. But they may be published, I mean, perhaps you have a look and see, I don't know, I'll be able to do that myself. I mean, it is a point, if, if you say eighty percent of secondary schools include second form education, that, or into that. Um, now, my learning friends, this one, that is, or, two, is to say, the word, the word only, clearly qualifies the education which is provided, and not the provision made by the school, certainly except, maybe it wasn't a matter of stimulus. But, but, they, they are related to that, in tactical, approach. The first, is that all my learning, approach, the word only, doesn't actually qualify anything. If the word does, the word, the concept is the same irrespective of whether it's included or not, then it's not qualifying anything. But, so I don't affect all terms on which my learning practice affects, to the same point about taking the narrative. Doesn't reflect meaning, yes, indeed, and, and all these parts are, of course, related. Um, we also, the, the binary distinction, set up between whether the word only qualifies what the school provides, the nature of the education provided is related, because it, it doesn't reflect the way that, that language works. Um, let's assume for a moment, only, intended to qualify the kind of education provided by the school, yes, just simply to ask, how does. If you talk about education suitable only for persons above the post's age, and not suitable for persons below, which, then it's bitter. And, and you then, in this court, excellent, what's for education suitable for persons above the post's age, and what's for persons below the post's age, and the answer is, education provided by sixth forms. So, I mean, the whole, the whole concept is about development, constantly, the act is not about the type of education that's provided by people, it's the people themselves, the body names, education by people of sixteen, fifteen, people undersized. I mean, there isn't, as there might be at universities, like, he calls, when, some of us read law at university, you could take constitution law in your first year, or your second year, so you might say, this is suitable for any undergraduate, year one, two, or three, this court, but that's not the position, it's law, sixth is a difference in the process, on, uh, there is. So the whole, the whole idea of suitability, particularly for, is, is a binary decision. And, and my lord, given that, exactly what my lord was expecting me, we really wouldn't matter, only, has placed the end of subsection, it's an argument around nothing, you say, yes. So, yes, and, and, you had four points, yeah, so that easily, I think that brings me on to a point, I mean, that doesn't matter, my, um, find this, which is the overarching, and, and, that's, that, my learning friends, who claims is unable to answer, doesn't actually attempt. The question, why is the word only there at all, and at any rate, education has to be able to address and answer. So, so we say, just as a matter of literal interpretation, the council position on the medium term subsection must be right. We also, that interpretation is supported by all means, how important is that? First of all, it's strongly, by the explanatory memorandum, and, and, I took you earlier with a passage in the explanatory memorandum, paragraph four, five, seven, which says, the intention was to ensure that proposals would be referred to Welsh governments, where they were connected, only, with the, uh, education, and, and that's all, the purpose of this, this part, was to ensure, uh, the fight is, uh, those, and, my lord, just personally, the Welsh version is, at least, that's the same, that's the attitude. Um, my lord, thank you, we, we, you said, in all, and do, that, that all the suggestions you made, by example, identity, in the Welsh language version, quite different, but that is exceptional, because it's not, it's not a matter of difference between Welsh and English at all, it is a question of. Or another way, to, to, on, on, to take a, all the sections of section high two, each proposal, or, substantial schools, not any of them. Need to know what schools, and the whole law, or sub-claws, is qualifying school, or describing school, and the fact it would be only in the sub-claws that describes what's happening at school, rather than before the work school, it doesn't make any difference, the whole point is step by step, loosely, the section is trying to say, look, it's both substantial schools, not all schools, certain schools, which ones, only those within the sub, that's another way to put it, magically.
Those which fall within the sub-claws, only.
Yes, doesn't matter, isn't your knowledge, Mr. Williams, prepare with me when I go to the Welsh, just see if I went to the Welsh. It's for all of us, it's for the undersized.
But even, the important thing, in point of view of the instruction exercises, is that you said, you looked at the Welsh language version, and you, uh, look, speak, every argument that you reduced in relation to the English version is directly, quite, quite. So the undertaking, as we showed, of, uh, the instruction exercises, you know, they know the hook in relation to each language version, before reaching any conclusions to the main, the same ones are in your submission of it.
Exactly. Um, just coming back to my context, paragraph three, paragraph six, that, that is of course consistent with the general thrust of the memorandum, which is to try to make sure that, quote, vast majority of proposals are out of. And we say it's also supported by the, by the white, um, look at that, early, of course, it, it just be worth turning off the words, yeah. Um, the point here, is that when one looks at the text, aren't it, if, we intend the Welsh ministers with the term all proposals concerning the removal of sixth forms, or the additions, including the closure of sixth form only schools, we say, that, that matches the council's interpretation of section fifty subsection two, because there are more of sixth form additions, such as pattern of section fifty-two B, paragraph six of schedule two, and the closure of sixth form only schools is exactly what section fifty-two A, from the council's function. Will, will also be of, it is sixth form only schools. Um, and we say that it's also supported by the scheme of part three of the Act as a whole, and in particular by section seventy-one. If I could just go back to section seventy-one, to have thought, to this, which is the Welsh minister's own part, proposed, this. As, as I indicated earlier, that provides the Welsh ministers with power to make proposals restructuring sixth form education. I'd establish a discontinuing forms, which provides secondary education suitable to requirements of sixth forms and no other secondary education, that created, the, 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 seventy-one, one F, and one C, or, regulated alteration, I suppose, it could be said against. But if they're in, in favor of Mr. Williams, that the, the legislators knew, I thought, as this hour was planned, and, and, whose, whose, in section fifty, section fifty, it's up there, well, the, the, my, my answer is, it is this, first of all. Whether they get to the Welsh ministers via the authority, or the Welsh ministers make a proposal themselves, and we say, it wouldn't make any sense as a matter of policy, or this reason, why there should be a mismatch between the sort of proposals the Welsh ministers make themselves, and the sort of proposals they decide to provide themselves. Well, except that if it's already, what's the form, if they can stop it being true, they wouldn't have to use section seventy-one, they'd be able to, no, no, you'd be the person from Wantbury High School, like it there, so, we'll do it, it doesn't, but, essentially, well, my lord, an option why one would have, that, um, what, why the Welsh ministers, um, get very wide, such as, be loaded, anything, change, by section fifty, they're always. get very wide, such as, be loaded, anything, change, by section fifty, they would always say that they have no power to make those sort of proposals themselves.
They're not just, they couldn't establish a future, but I thought we'd establish that they took, put the six form back and just wanted to be fine with the section seventy-one. There is purpose, even with section seventy-one, because rather than have to put it back in on Tuesday, they could not approve it on Monday. They could say, no, no, don't take it away, that's, it's from their, so it's a purpose upon the peace. And if you put it to us, we want to prove, on your case, they put a power to approve it on Monday, but they do have power to put it back on Tuesday.
My, my lord, I see your point, I think the ultimate response I get, which is, if you are trying to reach a situation where the vast majority of proposals are likely to happen, this is not consistent. Now, it's right that section seventy-one, section fifty, of course drafted in a slightly different way, but, I mean, I don't, in my submission, no great, um, significant attachments to that, because they're drafted in a different way in several respects. So, um, attaching some sort of particular significance to the active words and no other secondary education would have more weight if, for example, section seventy-one referred to persons above compulsory school, each of which was section fifty plus, rather than six. So simply, the two sections you've differently drafted in all one respect. But in my submission, those are significant attachments to that. And the only real purpose on the construction of section fifty that is being against the part of the plan is the suggestion in paragraphs thirty-six and thirty-seven, gallant, and it is the legislation, did it, that included it. Then the protection afforded by paragraph six, schedule two, would be unadvised. And that's because it said that authorities would be able to circumvent legislation by closing a whole inclusion school and opening a school without a secondary on the same site. Now, I say there are two reasons why that, purposely, can't be protected. And the first would be using the tail to rag the door, because it would mean that in order to avoid the supposed danger of authorities trying to circumvent the protections of the law, it falls alone. It suggested that the assembly passed legislation which had the final radical effect of requiring every person who closed a school to be allowed to the Welsh ministers. And the second is, is that in any case, we, the general public, will provide perfectly adequate protection against out of the right to circumvent legislation this way. And if the council made this one close, not purely to remove the sickle, which avoided referring to Welsh ministers, the answer is that using power for, for the purpose, have to be.
This is why I was asking, yeah, it's the third point, you've got, I'd feel, but it wouldn't work, it's the Welsh ones that put it back, you'd have a yo-yo, uh, problem. Not the kind of, keep abolishing it, including the school, renaming it, and the Welsh ones, oh, I'm putting it back in. Ultimately, whether or not there's going to be a six form upon a big light school, it has to be determined by the Welsh ones, one essential or another. Because either they, uh, what, you've got to go to the, they can be, there is an internal check in section seventy-one, if we were to have.
An internal check?
Yes, in, in terms of ways, I mean, the Welsh ministers.
Saying, yes, indeed.
You've done this, it, to stop having six forms, and not only that, if all the six forms, fashion doesn't work, maybe, you'd have a six from back.
Um. My lord, so those points I need to make to the English teachers. The points on Welsh, my lord, are already integrated, as I said, because they're matters of process. Um, the only thing I should touch on briefly, only finally, I can only find it to have five. Thank you, good day. Now, it's, um. What the claim to his disdain for gallant is that uneig, which is the Welsh, oh, most significant should be this, or the act of comes at the end, or construction to, like, people. I can see it just war, copper, not just the war, and now, which is war. Um, and as we understand it, the other one, which lies, maybe, is that the word key is most of the action. So we just see that, that they find that the word city, S Y P, uh, which, we need, we discuss, which is, as in education, which is, uh, upon, 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 on, on. And we say that noise bears the weight, which would be any, the name of this, which is the word education. Others. The end of the first one, the end of the first line.
Yes.
A, and how it sounds, others, others.
I say others, could you, Mr. Williams?
I, I this, on this. There's no doubt that that means education, nothing more than that. The main, the reason why I would explain the relation to the English text is to, whether, uneven, in the test, qualify the kind of education provided by the school, or what, school advice, is a, is a red apple, it is, discussed. Um, and then, we say that destruction, often as a, as a Welsh speaker, but as far as the position of, it's, uh, there's no rigid Welsh symbolism. The effect, just because it comes in a particular place, it must be qualifying a particular concept in a particular way. It may be of, um, interest in that, or just as a final tab of your thoughts, let's have twenty-seven, this one, interpretation. Because, um, this guy in legislative draft, which is a, a guide for, um, the office of the legislative house, so the team specialist doctor wants to draft Welsh law. That was, had, had twenty-seven, the very final. Um, then, in, in the final section, our three point eight, there's a section to take air placing only.
Welsh version.
My lord, I'm not sure you should, have a wish version.
Oh, my lord, the authorities' bundle was updated, Manchester, this lady, and my bundle, which is seven hundred and twenty. My lord, we provide that to you, I'm not sure. I don't, I don't manage.
Let me just reiterate. Yes, this is the, this is the eighth draft. This is the eighth draft. Drafted, drafted by the office of the legislative house, and as I say, a specific section about the placement of home, particularly care not in this space in English, or don't, or the corresponding Welsh phrase, it was uneven. In English, only dormitory, whatever comes to each after, it should be placed as opposed to possible, as what it modifies. In Welsh, the phrases, with pot, dormitory, after, or twelve, eating, dorm, whilst, or, 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 or. However, ambiguity there, for all of the sections, the most high rules, phrases, as well as single words. So, um, the short point, really, that, um, both the Welsh and the English text, it depends upon context. Rich, or, it's interesting, they had a specific, um, piece of advice, and I can't imagine the similar piece of advice in the draft, or, or is that something? I'm not, uh, I'm not aware, and it is, it is interesting, this piece of advice is there for, for both only and, and uneven, it is.
No, not going to be difficult, but it is very interesting that it's there, but was twenty nineteen, this edition, and this act was twenty thirteen, but, and I don't know whether it was, 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 but I'm sure I don't want to be, uh, be, demand, what, I would be, uh, uh, needed.
So I need to be helpful in that, um, to speak of what's, non, what's Welsh, and that's a new concept, maybe. And the other word is, dim on, only, in battle, with, 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 same as nothing. So that's another formulation of the word own in Welsh.
Yes.
Which is used, is it used in statutory drafting, or is it used?
I, Mr. Williams, I thought it was word first, the moment you, it was, it dim on, indeed, but, um, I think the Russian person, I don't know, around this. Demand is usually, meaning, this, this, the written, is, 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 quite right, but it's, uh, of a certain intellectual standard, um, really. It is interesting that this, that this guidance will be, deals with both, which suggests that demand is. But, uh, well, I, which is, uh, this, we didn't know this existed, you know, um, at least in our, uh, period. For the right, it's a belief, often, which, for the higher level intellectual stimulation, we managed.
The yard is, I'm placed on the shop.
Yeah, shop, but, I mean, I mean, in English, there is the, the British foundation, that's food.
But there is, I mean, there is words like dot, which you would normally use in statutory drafting, probably, in your mind, but, 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 and, and maybe that's the same. Um, and maybe that's the same in French saying. Which is posh French. You wouldn't use the, um, you, you, you wouldn't, um, use the.
But the precise. Better write, yes. Well, that's an interesting example, which is very. Difference between Lewis and Philip. Probably exactly reflected in what is used. And one. And, and the position, as we can see, of the Welsh difference. Demon really is a result just from this. What was it? I mean, the model of the miller. People, they won't leave. There's no words and that was going to another which was the Russian eating. I've read a lot of comparison. That's my belief. Most Americans, the English word just.
Just in the way in the sense of just.
But Japanese.
Yes, just. There's a section of five, actually, I'm sharing. I mean, I would be. If there were legislative day. Or parliamentary draftsman drafting. Which else would you do? Um, I don't, I'm sure. It would just be interesting to see the way parliamentary draftsman think. In, in using. Because one might. Do something saying you, um, don't need to be said. I mean, it's, it's. But you need to be careful about putting it in.
Yes, dear lord, and that's the exact amount once made it. And some paragraph five. Which is about to be attitude. Always consider whether the world and those who actually necessary. It's worth the liberty of action. We will question what we include. And that's just the reason to think might probably that the provision would depart. That there is that. And then, um. As we understand it. I learned it from. Other point of the Welsh. It is the inclusion of steam. And. Which is in the council position that it makes no difference at all. Because. You know. Rest. Which is. Question still. How we pray, un-eat, possibly doubt, ability to. Consequences of section two. And. And then we can use the treaty. E for some sort of verbal, M for phrase. Un-eat, often can't affect what type of subsections. What type of rule of perfection is concerned. And the reason that is not realistic, well, looking at. So, um. My lord, those reasons. Saying which Welsh. And both. Money. And support of destruction. Now, my lord, that brings us to the end. Destruction whatsoever. And there's, my lord, and the five minute break. And that gives us. Ground streets. Which are also large language. And, um, smart with grounds. And Mr. Lewis, whilst you're, before you, before you come. And submissions to be made by the Welsh is. About the position of Welsh. The need of Welsh language. Um, but not entirely clear in our context why we might deal. But, um. You have. And all clearly it desire. Many which. Welsh language entity that is part of to. It's a dual language station. And there's sense here to. Between the two. Did. Um. I, I do not. In what. Is it possible, um, for English judge to. Interact with the Welsh.
Use them.
I do say. Mr. Lewis, it's not impossible. It's not impossible. And but there is a variety of. Need. And what the, um, what the point is to.
What, but I agree, I think your submission in this case is very important. Standard. You all understand that there's no ambiguity, there's no difference here. Between the meaning of the English in much text and that in the scene. Um, the same argument applied in English. Um, but Mr. Lewis makes the mission more genuine. Um, saying that, um. I think that, um, you need a finding of judge. Um. I mean. And obviously, we're, we're dealing here with a, with, um, reality as well. But I mean, in other jurisdictions. I'm not sure that there's a requirement where legislation is in common with Chinese and English always have a finding of judge. I mean, I'm just.
Well, in terms of, I mean, what my lord says about practicality, obviously, in a case like this, because, um. Here one had a Welsh language ground raised. At least then did have the party for hearing in the context of the challenge to a decision, which is very time sensitive. And it may just not be possible, um, to find. Welsh judge to Welsh speaking judge to sit on. Um, and. There should, in my submission, be no major rule that means that because a Welsh textual pointer has been raised. The case inevitably needs to be delayed until that can be heard by someone who is efficient in both approaches. There are other means. The called grappling with the meaning. Language, which is not. Without contributing the proper interpretative. Would you? I mean, obviously, it tends to surface. But the exact issue is the rises. Here. This really does. Watch. Now, at least not all. Why?
Yes, thank you.
Um. So, my lord. I just come to ground three and four. And, um, I wonder if I can just start by putting those grounds in context. And relevant bits, what we hope are, um, in this documentary. Starting at page twenty-three. I think my lord's number may be a little bit different. This paragraph one point two. And taken to have. So that, that is the sort of governing. For. Paragons, following paragraphs. Should. And then that's the function. And even for the. Paragraphs one point three to one point six are applicable in the case of all. And one point three. Perhaps for you that. One point four is about the need to ensure that there is sufficient scope in the number added. And that's, that's a master variation. Under one point four. There are various things. One is. Sufficiently passive as a first. Page internal page end, where alternatives may be sufficient, passive, wide condition. Whether the court exists, get. Then over the page to page mark. Where proposal takes on the Welsh's immediate destruction, the subject's positive touch. The summer war, the authorities should allow the Welsh language. The paragraph bullet meeting before that. Is about Jones. About one of Jones discussing forty-five minutes. That's one point four. And then one point five and one point six are fairly quick.
You must tell me why some in great money. And some. In order. You look.
Well, I think.
We also go to reduction.
Or at least.
And then there's a bullet point. The order. Fastly and foundation for this. And then there's a bit of naughtality. I, I take that to be because it's equivalent to commentary. It's like money, obviously, and then you've got the commentary. That, that's how it naturally reads. If that's right, then the second bullet point, you've got to look at that first, because that's a reference to the nature of the law. So. Whether the alternative could be sufficient to meet a visiting and project a demand. And that's looking at demand instead of, uh, Welsh language. Kind of very unif relative really. And in all the bullet points. And sorry, all the text after is like tonic. And that's about making sure that the existing people can keep their Welsh or English meeting one and so on. Yes, the next bullet point, my lord, in the ring. Something different again. Yes. And my, my lord, sorry, I should have, sorry, I should have taken the same bullet. And taken. And it's about Welsh language. Um. Then, yeah, I mean, that must be about more than existing. With existing people safeguarded by the second paragraph of vital. In all cases, the existing people must be. So we know that the next. Must be looking at people more broadly than the existing. But must be looking through the others. Um, one point five and one point six. Fine. It's also. Then one has, um, the one point seven and bullet. Um, various, uh, specific factors. Be taken into account, mainly dealing with particular types. And, um, one point nine. Etting specific factors be taken into account for proposals to be organized secondly, or to add or remove. And then under that. There are various bullet. This is the things that should. Should have been a must. Of obligation. And going over page, now internal page fourteen. The fifth bullet now. How proposed light effects extended from Welsh language vision. Twenty forty, lighting network, wider area. Note access to Welsh meeting courses in post sixteen education. Um. And, um. Just going back to very first content. General and useful just to see the contrast between. General matters and specific matters. That, that's page one. Um, one six, one point one, one point six, look at the various general matters. Then one point seven, uh, uh, and four. Uh, the various. Um, now. When we need to turn to how the case was. If you're going to check, you haven't looked at the proposal. What does that mean? There are. One of the. Then there are. Ente. Are there separate proposals? The law for one. And the separate one for Scott Gennar. On Sion. And there's a separate one for Montague High and a separate one. So on any enough, this, except that this paragraph applied to the Montague High and the Hawthorn. But there's no issue taken with that, is there? There's only the proposal.
For the. Um, I mean, the clearest place to see, um, that, that is how effective the post. Publication of the, um. Statutory notice. So the way this was pleaded, lord, is, um, four bundle, page eighty-four. And I say so, it seems to be, um, my. Now, there's like this paragraph eighty-four, I'm going to page, um, two hundred and fifty-two sixty-two. This is, this was a ground that, that first, first came into the amendment. Then it passed.
But I'm.
In paragraph.
Cause my bundle doesn't go to page two six to finishing two five seven.
Paragraph eighty-four. The amendments. I'm sorry, my lord, perhaps over lunch, you can.
Yes, I found. Full. With the, um, with the efficient. But I have not found another call bundle. Anyway, I've got paragraph eighty-four, the effect of the defendants' offense.
Yes. Yeah, to be fair, you've got to look at the heading too, what Mr. Williams was saying since. They achieved. Propose as mighty effect Welsh meeting. That's the ground, it's not tied to any paragraph. He's just saying not in. Effect of. In Russia. But there is. Indeed, my lord. Yes. There, there will be. About that. But the way which it was pleaded, the paragraphs eighty-four to ninety. Is it, 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 it piggybacks on provisional reports for the Welsh language commission. The alleged breach of Welsh language standards. When the council's consultation. So the claim. Various bits of Welsh language standards, that the Welsh language commissioners breached. And the basis of provisional. This is the consultation documents didn't specifically and explicitly seek views on the impact. That the proposals would have on opportunities for persons to learn, to use Welsh language. Uh, uh, and that provisional report is now the final. After the challenge against Welsh language. Separately, they could go on going. But I don't present. That. But at the end. Paragraph ninety. What's said is, for the purposes of the courage to judicial review, the table basis with the report of the Welsh language commission, which came in since possession of the second January twenty twenty. The vice out of letter. The defendants' petition due to the Welsh language. Moral position. In that, it failed to take into account a specific factor that the proposals to be organized secondly. Or to. Name. Two parts of the Welsh revision of regional portions. And promote access to pay the media Welsh media courses in post sixteen education. So. We say, well, that's a specific allegation or breach of this particular bullet. It's not a paragraph one point nine. And nothing else.
I'm probably going to. To it, but how does that? In effect, pleaded allegation of breach one point nine translate to one point one point four stroke?
That's what I go. And I went.
Stop talking.
Um. What, what, what's explained in the. In the lead. My special submission is how the Welsh language commission's findings on the content of consultation. Are relevant. But that, that is how the case came. And that's where matters stood until further evidence. By the claims. In. May. So, uh, as six weeks before the trial. And all was related.
For not further evidence, before or after your duty of.
It came before. The further evidence before. Um, and. That is, the, the relevant reference is in witness statement. Half of the. Not by Catherine. Last. Which is page three hundred. After the. The relevant bit of this. Starts at page three eleven. And I can see there the reference to.
I told you about the page number.
I am. But page three twelve. This witness statement to answer the case that the council has not considered the impact of closing. Is for Dunravgan Ray. What's your lord?
So I'm really sorry about this, Mr. Williams. I did ask for that, I must be confused. That's why I asked. What do you know? And Miss Life appears to be commenting on your detail. And yet I thought you said it came before the.
Um. My lord, I. Do you see my.
I, I didn't. I must remember whether we served to.
Okay, it certainly had a.
But it's right to. Because you're taking a pleading point, you really must know what was said when.
Yes.
Have you said these lines? They're in.
Yes.
You might have signed a summary ground, you see, and then you might have done a detail ground.
My lord, I'm sorry, I mean, we're, we're just going to. Piece that together, was it? I need to understand whether that might actually be a reference to the summary.
Yes.
Anyway, um, the. Anyway, the, the point is made at page three twelve, that the council hasn't considered the impact of closing YGG Pontshorn Norton, so primary school, on Welsh medium secondary education. Said Welsh medium education generally affected those schools, because children will be lost to Welsh medium secondary education. And that they're going to poke their feet right in. And the council serves further with from Lisa How in response, which starts at page. And paragraph twenty six to twenty seven, Miss Howells, Miss Lyles appears to have misreplicated the essence, because paragraph one point nine doesn't apply to proposals for reorganisation of primary education.
Will you be glad, I looked at the beginning, it's three four one, and you're reading through the part that I'm not in the script of them. But she is replying, she to.
She is reply.
I'm going to, I think we trust you to be telling us something that's accurate, that you double check.
And that is, yes, she is reply. So where were you in this? This is paragraph twenty six. So paragraph twenty six refers to what Miss Lyles is saying. And paragraph twenty seven is the little, the sound sense of what. Paragraph one point nine, the code concerns proposals to be organised secondly, and primary school. And paragraph twenty eight, of course, will recognise that Welsh medium primary education can have an impact on Welsh medium secondary education.
That is, this is taken up by the judge's judgment.
That's a point, indeed. Now, it is the case that he's reporting Miss Lyles's witness. It is the case that my lady friend eventually ran a trial. And one sees that on the page one hundred and forty nine of the call bundle.
Yes, I don't want to be impugnant to you, but in what appears to be your own detail grounds, if you did understand that it was paragraph one point nine, at page ninety three, four point two three, you seem also to have understood it was paragraph one point four, to refer to what you pointed for. And if we would have a very beneficial effect, we had a detailed written chronology saying what came when and which stigma came when. We've got bits taken in context and dates that aren't known. But page ninety three refers to paragraph one point four. And if Miss Howells first or second, if you claim after four point two three, then you must warn me, one point four is an issue. As my lady says, you knew exactly what the point was, that you don't think about where the children will go for primary school. They might not get into our medium system at all.
Well, my lord, with respect, I mean, we, I think what we, what we have seen by the response is, this isn't paragraph one point nine at all. If it were anything, the obligation is paragraph one point four, when it's worked.
As I understand your case, you're saying, gosh, this is shocking, we didn't realise one point four, we didn't put in evidence one point four. But could I ask you please to look at page ninety three, paragraph four point two point three? And that's why I'm asking about dates. But if you look ninety three, the way that you've read ground two, gee, you mean the code recommends paragraph one point four. They should publish a Welsh language evaluation assessment, that's what the council did.
Yes, my, my lord, I am wondering whether in fact this, and I will give you an answer to this after lunch, but I'm wondering whether the duty. In fact, what I've said to you, what you've about, the detail grounds, we put it after the time, this witness statement is wrong.
But that's why I wonder, but if your case is you were taken by surprise, it seemed to take you by surprise, with the greatest respect, because you got the date wrong. Anyway, you'll check.
So the case that's run a trial is the case in my lady's skeleton, which starts at paragraph one hundred and fifty. And one one five to one two five are the points that defendant failed to consider the need of activity. So primary school on Welsh medium provision for those that are looking to match the error. So we say it was a case squarely based upon paragraph one point nine, and nothing else. And it was a case squarely based upon the alleged failure to consider how the closure of Pontshorn Norton would affect the suitability or enhancement of Welsh medium provision in the local fourteen to nineteen network, and nothing else. And when one comes to the judgments, pick that up at paragraph one hundred and fifty. That's page sixty on the whole bundle. But one oh four, of course, has taken place in paragraph one point nine, but significantly without reaching its heading. Then there's a section that deals with the Welsh Language Commission's investigation. And at one one four, a summary of the claimant's case, stating positions that changes to Welsh medium primary education founded on proposals for inevitably have an impact on the Welsh medium secondary education. And then he mentions the council's acceptance of changes to Welsh medium primary education can have an impact on Welsh medium secondary education. That's the basis of how secondly, the thing that is taken down. Paragraph one one five is, on its face, a conclusion that paragraph one point nine of the code applies to this. This particular proposal was primary to the commission. You're claiming submissions may be recorded, and then one sees all lines down, I accept that submission. And then at paragraphs one one six to one two two, I'll come back to the context of ground five. The court rejects the council's evidence that it did have changes to Welsh medium primary education will have an impact on secondary education. At one twenty three, the conclusion is, the council is in breach of paragraph one point nine as a code, because it failed to consider how the closure of YGG Pontshorn Norton and Hillley Court, and the establishment of a new Welsh medium primary school in Hillley in sight, will impact on Welsh medium provision generally. How the impact of Welsh medium primary education will have an impact on Welsh medium secondary education for those in the fourteen to nineteen network. Is the last sentence an additional point? I think it's a summation, not an additional point, my lord, that's how I read it. And then one two four, about discretion, and one two five, accordingly, I find that the council is in breach of duties under twenty thirteen currently, in this respect, as mentioned by the claimants. The claimants need to challenge on the Welsh language ground.
These duties, you say, only duties that the one point nine that he's referring to is not broad enough to cover one point four?
Yes. So.
It's one point nine only.
One point nine only. This is all venue, yes. Dimon.
Dimon, yeah.
Dimon, the, even if. Right, it's only in the one point nine, yes. So against that fact, I'm going to ground three. We say that there was no possible basis for the court to find that paragraph one point nine of the code was breached on the case put forward by the claimants, because paragraph one point nine simply does not apply to proposals to reorganise primary education at all.
See, reading one two three carefully, and bearing in mind he's referred to one point four, is quite a amount of paragraph, in breach of one point nine. And the assumption that the new Welsh provision on their failure to tell insight will impact on Welsh medium provision generally, and how the impact on Welsh medium primary education will impact on the fourteen to nineteen network. Fourteen to nineteen network is a reference to the wording in paragraph one point nine. But it may be that Mr Justice Fraser is combining everything to do with the Welsh language, sometimes talking about one point nine, sometimes talking generally. And then when you get to one point two five, the reference to duties, not only anene, it's more generally. So it may be, because the judge of lack of clarity in his part, the real part is if you close a school and they've got nowhere else to go, the Welsh language primary schools, the risk is they won't go on to secondary school. Really simple as that, I think. And however he's expressed it, that's the number what he's getting to, isn't it?
Well, well, that may be the number what he's getting to, but the allegation against this breach of one point nine as a code, that is the allegation, that is the allegation to determine. There are two sets of duties, relevant Welsh language duties that are dealt with. One is what's said in one point four of the code. Come to that, because on my suspicion is absolutely unarguable, to suggest that the council has not satisfied one point four of the provision. And the other is one point nine, and one point nine applies to provisions to reorganise secondary education. So if the judge was trying to make some order, the answer is that, that is not what the code upon which he is relying says.
Because the allegations want to go back to two six two, failures to the interaccount, are the proposals most of our Welsh medium education, and you're the one that introduces one point four. And the judge is dealing with everything.
Well, it's perfectly true, and we introduced one point four to say, if, if anything could apply, this is what it would be. But one doesn't plead in an allegation by referring to it en passant, as it were, to say, and by the way, you've, you've chosen the wrong provision of the code, it doesn't then become part of the case. Well, perhaps, my lord, I will also take into how I dealt with one point four as a result after him.
I'm, I'm, let me make this clear, I'm not seeking towards the improvement. My lord, earlier Justice Lewis spoke about expressions he grew up with. I grew up with one which is all, it's all over the shop. Yes. And I wonder if that really applies to paragraph one two three.
If you separate substance from labour, the substance was, what does happen to the children if they can't go to a primary school in Wales? The labour seems to have shifted all over the place. One point nine, one point four, it gives me the language mandatory consideration, general public law, that's what he was looking at. And that's my lady, it is just all over the place.
My, my lord, I mean, in a sense, I mean, that's all very well, but the council needs to know what case it has to meet. I mean, it's never put against this sort of basis, that there is a mandatory consideration in general public, that the council can take account of the closure of Welsh medium primary education or Welsh medium secondary education. If it happened, we would have answered that case.
Are you really saying there was evidence you would have put in, that you didn't put in, even though you'd identified one point four, and you put in two? Are you saying, infidelity, there's material that you would have been, had you only realised that although you'd referred to one point four, and although you were taking the plea, the heading doesn't refer to one point four, nonetheless you held the evidence from the court?
My lord, I, I do say, my lord, that we would have put in different evidence, and certainly I would have made different submissions if I'd put, that is the point being made next.
But take the book first, can you tell me, please, what other evidence would have gone in other than the cabinet report, the Welsh language assessment, and the other documents for the consultation?
Well, my lord, evidence from the decision is as to what was taken into account in the proposals between. Because that's, that's what this is about.
But the evidence would be the evidence, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. And the huddlestone duty, you've got to give a full explanation of the facts and the reasons underlying the decision. And Miss Howells has done that twice. So surely, as you've chosen her to put in the evidence, you didn't fail in the duty to give a full explanation of the reasons and the facts that's underlying the decision.
Well, my lord, that duty needs to be seen in, in the prism of what the council is actually facing as an allegation.
And what is facing is a decision to publish proposals, the culture of Pontsion. And that's what she's got to do. She doesn't look at labour, she looks at substance. Are you really telling me she would have said something different in one of those two witnesses statements? If only she had been told that although you'd referred to one point four in your pleadings, she knew only concern herself with one point nine?
Um, my lord, perhaps we can just, I mean, paragraph one point four is, is about two is. One is, well, there are two possible red bits. One is the bit that deals with the Welsh language, that says you have to carry out a Welsh language impact assessment. And then we say, you've done it. And the other is the bit that says, you've got to make sure you've got standards are sufficient in number and character. Now, that, the evidence for the court to my suspicion, unquestionably establishes that that duty was met. But Miss Howell was not looking at matters through that prism. In other words, she didn't think, well, I've got to meet a case that requires me to address in some detail why the schools were sufficient in number and character for Welsh medium education. I'll, I'll take you to the, in due course, probably after lunch, to the evidence that indicates in my suspicion, no question at all, that the duty of one point four was in the next. Well, I do also say that the witness statement would have been framed to have found that a different weapon, that's the allegation. Um, my lord, is that a good point at which, well, we've still got five minutes again, and I think we should try and use the time. Because I should, I should press on for another five minutes. Um, so, ground three. Just worth standing up, one point nine, four two, code, at some some. Just worth, um, turning up, um, one point nine, which is code at some, um, page twenty nine. And we say the wording of paragraph one point nine of the code is entirely clear, it is headed specific factors to be taken into account for proposals to reorganise secondary schools or to add or remove sections, and if one looks at the various bullet points under it, including the Welsh medium bullet point lies on it by the claims, they all refer to factors that must be taken into account in respect of proposals. And the word proposals, in turn, we say is obviously a reference to the type of proposals that are in the heading, the bullet point is all about how proposals of that type might affect the reasons. So we say this bit of the code simply does not fight for how a proposal to reorganise primary education might affect on the local institutions might be met. And we say that, that is actually a simple and complete answer to the case that is actually made against the council. And we respect its submission on that basis alone, that the council, again, will find it for round two G, which will be met. So that's round three. Round four is the one point four of the case, and that arises from the council's application for permission to appeal against the court's findings of round two G of the claim, and the reasons given for rejecting that application in respect of the Welsh language grounds by the judge. And it is, in my suspicion, essentially a belt of braces in the hands, so it only arises as if, contrary to the council's submission, the High Court did actually win against the council on some wide basis, not just breach of paragraph one point nine. And the reasons for refusing permission are at page fourteen, as the court wrote. And at paragraph fourteen, the judge says that round four, that's the reference to what is now round three. Concentrates on breaches of paragraph one point nine of the code to state that may be only part of the plea challenge of the council. The conclusion of one two five of the judge, I find that the council is in breach of its duties under the twenty thirteen code, and these claim in paragraph one point four, which one oh four of the judgment is clear applies in all cases. And then, my first suspicion is that it's not a term of reading judgments, because the specific finding reached in the court is at paragraph one two three of the judgments, which I showed you earlier, and that, we say, is a fine breach of paragraph one point nine, not anything else. And the judgment does not, anything else, that paragraph one point four is not actioned. And as far as the judge is referencing, paragraph one two five of the judgments, that says, I find that the council is in breach of its duties under the twenty thirteen code, as alleged by the claims. And that's, go back, make the statement back to round, for which it's clear that this allegation is an allegation of breach of paragraph one point nine and others. So I say that's, that's not actually the nature of the court's reasoning. But I also need to address the position on the counter factor, this reason for the counter factor, that the court did not address the council, the breach of paragraph one point four, that you tended, that my thinking would help in certain, I'm thinking to myself, if we had not only references, I'm not able to include them, when I've seen the cabinet document and I've seen the Welsh language assessment, I don't know if I've seen the consultation documents or forgotten, then I can't know, and all I can do is practice and finish it, but if we have a note or tell us what are the documents going to say, and irrespective of what may have been put on it, the question of whether they would be armed to Welsh medium education by closing Pontsion. My lord, I, I guess take you through.
Right, I finish.